Selling vehicles that the city owns, fifty old police cars. We put that on to the program that we go through, the Gov deal, it's an online auction. We sold six police vehicles that we no longer were using for a grand total of four thousand five hundred and five dollars. And we sold two vehicles under the street department that were no longer being used for a grand total of six hundred and sixty dollars.
Does that move back into general fund?
The police cars go back to wherever the vehicles were purchased. Goes back to that. So the police cars, I think, were bought out of the drug. So that goes, once we get the money from Gov deals, that's where it's being put into. And then the six hundred and sixty that we got for street department will go back into the general fund. Back in the summer, we, Ken and I, applied for a grant through Duke Energy Foundation. Usually Duke has grants out there for environmental things. But this year, they opened it up more so than environmentally due to the COVID nineteen, because they saw where people were doing outside things more than normal, they thought. So they opened up a grant to where you can apply for outdoor exercise per se. So we applied for a grant for ten thousand dollars to add some outdoor exercises put in the app here at the Wellness Center property. We were notified about two weeks ago that they will award us ten thousand. In fact, I think we got the check last week. So there was ten thousand dollars that Duke Energy Foundation has awarded the city for some exercise equipment around the Wellness Center track. And then part of that, we have to put up a sign that says, "This was funded by Duke Energy Foundation." Last month, there was a question about chemical costs for Purdue Lift Station. It cost us roughly five thousand dollars a month to put in what is known as lime slurry and odor control, is what it costs the city for the that month station, the lift station.
Did we reach back out to Purdue to see if they would help with the costs?
Not as yet, but I will tell you that Purdue paid us, during the same time period, I went back and looked at this cost, Purdue paid us one point five million dollars in nutrients and sixty thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars in depreciation between that twelve month period.
The contract renegotiated a year?
No, there don't have a contract with it.
There's no contract anymore. And, you know, at one time, the contract, part of the operation then repaired, and we came up with a number per gallon that was blue. You know, that's what we spent the year. And some of that was in it, but now, and that was when it was dollar ninety, two dollars a thousand gallons. What did it pay them?
Were you paying them? A little four dollars per gallon.
Four dollars a thousand gallons, so in fifteen years, that's double what they paid. And we're buying, you know, one point sixty gallons, that at four dollars, four dollars a thousand, it's, they, it's made a part of our, of our place and our, 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 sort of, sort of budgets. But I, I was curious if the, if, if we, as we look, if we look at their costs, we have talked to them about what they sent us, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And are we testing, I mean, sometimes it stinks, sometimes it does. I mean, when we look at that testing, are they staying within the guidelines?
And when they don't, we send them a violation.
Okay. And we can reach out to them, I'm not close to that guy, but, you know, we're, they're doing what we ask them to do, and they're paying us what we're charging them to pay. And, you know, to ask them to do more, I'm going to change, I'm not going to get my feelings hurt or come back and say, you know, we're building up the.
Yeah, my only problem I had is, like, on Dearwood Avenue, we have another catastrophic debris, and it costs the city quarter of a billion dollars.
Right.
You know, that's what I was looking at.
Well, and then, what you got there is depreciation account.
Right, and what are we having at?
One point nine, is that about right?
But, I mean, anything can happen.
Oh, yeah.
And when it happens, it's a catastrophic.
And I'll tell you this, and I take, you know, I've been here long, and I know what our, what our flows have been and what, what they're supposed to be. Our sludge hasn't gone down, but they've gone from nine gallons a burr down to four gallons a burr. You know, so they've cut their water and sewage significantly. How do you do that? And the only way you can do it is send a higher concentration of, of this jar. And when it sends that higher concentration, the volume drop, and then those highs and lows on that pipe, and that volume drop, and the gas above that ate those pipes up. So a little bit, I mean, already wrong, and this is what happened. Our sludge, our sludge feeds stayed the same, and we did that probably a year and a half. And then, you know, and we caught up a little bit.
I mean, we didn't catch up. Nine hundred thousand dollars with all the, or in two thousand, my memory is starting to break. In two thousand thirteen, when we had the first central, we had almost three million in that depreciation account.
Yeah.
And, you know, at that point in time, the system was almost fifteen years old. So that's when we started, having to start building. So, you know, we were right at three million, and we probably spent since then, at least two million, and, you know, we're back to one point eight million. Which, that's that sixty thousand they put in annually now, and we put in what?
Twenty-five.
What, a year?
No, okay, that's just, we put in.
So we put in about ninety thousand a year, and they put in sixty thousand, so that's one hundred and fifty thousand a year.
That being said, that being said, and you don't ever want to call it a margin, if you look at your water and sewage, about two hundred thousand, I think last year we operated at about four hundred thousand dollars a margin. So that's how we're kind of putting that depreciation, so that we, you know, we'll have money there, and then we'll have money to match when we go and try to, you know, build a, build a plan.
We're putting now, our funds, their funds, in depreciation combined now versus when they were under contract, and they were under contract when we had a SRF one, which was like thirteen million dollars, and they paid roughly fifty-eight percent of that money. And during that time period, that twenty year time period, us combined and depreciated, we both put in, had a total combination of two hundred and twelve thousand, I believe it was, so we're about half that now, not a little over half.
We're putting one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars a year, the city and.
But we had a, we had a margin, but we went to a period that was a margin.
We did.
And we made adjustments, but now we're with, with function, with margin, so that we can get that going back up.
And at that time also, their, their rate was pretty much a dollar.
Ninety-two. It was a dollar ninety-two. We went from a dollar seventy-two to a dollar ninety-two, that was fifteen, twenty years ago, it was like, the suits came in for brick cases. But, but, you know, they, I tell you, Purdue, Purdue was headed that PD Coalition thing. They're, they're good community supporters, and I don't mind asking, but I, I don't, like I say, I think they're paying their share, and I think we're going to be all right enough.
How far are we from actually having the Westmore Creek plant paid off?
We've paid it off.
And thirteen million was what, two years ago?
Three years.
Two thousand.
Because I know when Grand Strand came to meet with us, we, we had a time we had paid it off, correct?
We, we should have done it at the end of the year. They could pay off September or August of two thousand seventeen for that.
What's our plan right now for the going down thirty-four, just changing subjects?
There is a study that was provided funded by Department of Commerce and NISA, and PME COG is in charge of that, and the engineering firm is doing this countywide water sewer state, and once that.
Who's funding, I mean, who's, is that going to us?
No, that's going to the county.
But Harbor Freight is already on our water.
Yeah, they're on our sewer.
Sewer.
So they're on our sewer, but we're doing the water for their sprinkler system.
No.
Or not?
No. No, no.
So zero water.
Zero water in the city.
But since we're then next to the logistics center, now can we get Harbor Freight next to you?
Yeah.
Possibility, but we haven't, the logistics center hasn't sent their stuff in yet.
No, sir.
Well, we did get in, we will. What will the numbers look like with those groups involved?
Numbers in what way?
As far as our prestructure going out in that direction.
Feet structure?
Or usage? Actually, whatever alley the city big is, it's one there to be.
Yeah, but if they're handouts, doesn't that?
Well, if they're handouts, then it'd be.
And it's, they don't, they don't, I mean, it's toilet, it's not a lot.
But if they're next to one side of the road, but not the other?
No, both sides of the road is hand, ten feet up to, ten feet deep of each frontage on thirty-four. The length of the property with ten feet depth.
I got you.
Is all we got, in addition, and then as they deal.
So their plan on SEDOT is to stand that road wide and through? Because I would like, I mean, Dr. Wallace mentioned before, if I was going to the other side of the, the Love side.
We're on the other side.
Yeah, we got, we got a big gallons capacity on the west side of.
Just the water.
Sewer, sewer.
We have, we have no. See, that's in the county, so Trico has.
So you're, we're running from around the other way down?
No, we've got, we've bored up right on that.
Under, so we're already prepared for that. What's, what's our volume on that, I mean?
Million gallon capacity, but.
That's not a large capacity.
None, and I'd be very surprised if, you know, they don't come back with the idea that we need a plan on the west side of.
So if there had to be housing on the other side, we would run into an issue with that.
Good, well, but, you know, a thousand ga, you know, million gallons will go a long time, a long way in residential, it's just isn't going to go very far with the, with the land industry.
With a plan, yeah.
Those, those Purdue couldn't go out.
Are we serving Wyman Gordon still?
Yes. Well, Wyman Gordon, Harbor Freight, Love Traffic Center, the new, the new spec building, I don't know if you think moved into it yet, on the other side of Wyman Gordon, that's tied, that would be tied into our system. The last thing I have, we'll come to the last thing, I'm sorry, in the police department, we have talked about during the budget process, in the last month or two, about upgrading our patrol, the police patrol cars, the laptops and printers, that cost is roughly fifty-eight thousand and sixty-three dollars, which we talked about if we got recruited tonight, we can take that out of our drug fund money to pay that.
How much is left in that?
About two hundred.
Now, this is an upgrade you're talking about, correct?
No, this is, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have.
What will that do for you, Dave?
It'll, it'll make things, when we talk it all off, so this year, that was one of the main things that everybody really, because they're doing double or triple work, because they'll go, they'll, they'll analyze the information from the victim and suspect, and they go back to the office, and then they have to type it in, same as traffic tickets, they'll write the ticket, and then they have to go back and manually enter. So there'll be a indoor patrol car that they're to do it one time, it'll be saving a lot of.
Lot of time.
Lot of time.
Ticket automated, branded in?
Yes, and at that point, instead of, there'll be a handheld scanner, am I correct? Where the tech driver, like, in turn, can just scan, instead of having a quick line number or call it.
They, they.
And that is happening. And then the down the road issue will be, the county along with the state, is it the state?
Yes, sir.
Or, or the state is looking to fund what is known as a server, I guess, to go with nine-one-one. So when they dispatch, it will also be sent out to their computers.
Yeah. I think the most important thing is that they don't have to go back now to headquarters and leave the community, they can do the port wherever they're in, so I think that's, you know, win-win.
But that'll be, that'll be brought up in, in number two business to vote on, to let you know that this sixteen patrol car, sixteen laptops, which roughly is thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars, sixteen printers, which is about ninety-four hundred dollars, then we've got to have mounts to put this stuff on in the car, which comes to about sixty-four hundred dollars, and then.
Got a bus to charge too, don't you, don't you have to have a hotspot?
There will be Verizon or somebody we're looking at to not have a hotspot, just to be able to communicate, but there will, what is it, twenty dollars a month?
Twenty dollars a month.
Per computer, so, and then installation, sixty-four hundred dollars, which that brings the total to fifty-eight thousand, but that's under new business to vote on.
I still, I, I, so it'd be six hundred dollars a year, right? I did love that, but.
Home.
Just.
Service.
Don't we have about thirty cars?
No, sixteen, sixteen.
Oh, you're doing on sixteen?
Doing on sixteen, too.
Thirty-five.
Doing on sixteen. And the last thing I have, turn it over to Chief Lane to introduce two of our newer police officers.
That's something we need to vote on?
No, no, it's not a new business.
Cut it back with it.
I got you.
First, I'd like to introduce Christopher Zeller. We call him CJ, he is, he's got six years of experience in law enforcement. He actually started, started his law enforcement career here, he graduated Soonborn, and he graduated with some folks who were here in Dillon, and we hired him, he stayed here for two years, which was, which was an agreement that we made, and he, and he decided to, he wanted to spread his wings a little bit, he went to the Fort Worth Beach and stayed there for a while, and he's back here, and we are very pleased to have him back here, he did a great job before, and we're excited to have him back. Secondly, we have Drew Massingill, he has just completed the police academy last Friday. This, the police academy is a lot different, because they, they reduced the number of people in class there, tried to limit the amount of hands-on, that folks that he was in class with, I think he was with those people all the time, when he came home, he was supposed to quarantine, just so they'd make sure they didn't have an outbreak at the police academy, but Drew's been up at the police academy for the last eight weeks, is that right?
That's right.
And he's, he's from here, and we're also glad to have him, you know, see him around, please welcome him, and, you know, we'll just give him a round of applause.
So where does that split us at as far as staffing?
We're still two short, I'm correct, three short, Chief, tell me.
Yes.
And two of the three are on the detective side, or on the?
All three are on that side. We actually have one in the police academy now, and I think he has a four, four each length.
And once he comes out, patrol units will be four, so we're one, one short on patrol unit, but he's in the academy. That's all I hang up.
All right, Jen?
I'm going to start out with general fund, I'm going to give you the cash accounts for general fund and depreciation accounts, control fee, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Our revenue, revenues year-to-date is a million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Our expenses year-to-date is one million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars more in expenses than revenues, because we're not getting our revenues for our taxes until probably November of these numbers. So we're at twenty-seven percent expenses and twenty-four percent revenues.
And you, you used to put in, like, what were, like, two thousand and nineteen?
Yeah, I didn't know if y'all still want, but I took.
Me, I mean, these numbers, I mean, I want to know them, but I'd like to know if relative, I, I, I know we kept the doors open a year ago, so if I'm, if I'm doing as good as I did last year, I'd like to keep the doors open.
I'll put it back on.
Yeah.
I'll put it back on. Okay, the next one is the stormwater fund, we've got a hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars in the account, our revenues, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-one year-to-date, expenses is twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, we've got twelve thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars more in revenue than we did in expenses. Water and sewer fund, our cash account, depreciation and CD, that is non-restricted, we have a million, six hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars in that account, the Purdue and the customer deposits, which is total restricted, is two million, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars, totaling both accounts three million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars.
The depreciation would be growing in restricted accounts, and, correct?
Correct.
And in the non-restricted is where we would put any?
If I have any excess that I can put in there, I would put it there.
That's at the end of the year?
Correct, that's where. Just, you know, that's where you're going to see the number grow, you're not going to necessarily see it in the restricted account.
Our revenue today is a million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, our expenses is nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five more in revenues and expenses. We've got our revenues as thirty-seven percent, our expenses twenty-six percent. Golf course, golf course, our cash account's twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars, our total revenues year-to-date is seventy-one thousand, one hundred and six dollars, our year-to-date expenses, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, we're sixty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars more in expenses than revenues. And of course, we have two pumps that go out. Special revenue, which is two percent hospitality, so we've got a million, is a one million, one thousand, one hundred and one dollars in that account, okay? Our revenues, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars year-to-date revenues, our expenses is seventy-seven dollars and eighty-five cents, a difference of a hundred and sixty-six, five hundred and seventy-four more in revenues and expenses. We did transfer forty-five thousand to the golf course. Last year, I want to tell you, last year, we took in year-to-date a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two, which is eight thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars more this year than last year.
And that's with two restaurants, then? We've got the luggage angles we're doing, and, you know, everything. Exactly. We, we, uh.
All right. Uh, Mr. Kirk?
Yeah, Kevin Kirk is here for our stormwater study. Kevin worked with AECom, who's our engineering firm on this project, and asked Kevin, excuse me, come in to kind of brief counsel on what, what they're fixing to do, or what they are beginning to do, and kind of get kind of our presentation.
All right, thank you, I appreciate the invitation to come tonight and speak with you a little bit. I'm Kevin Kirk, the project manager with AECom, and, as you know, stormwater is a, a big deal around here, with all the hurricanes that we've had over the last several years, as well as some of these high-intensity rainfall events like the, the three inches we saw the other week, you know, not having enough stormwater capacity in the system to handle that is, has been a big deal. So we were successful working with Glenn to obtain a hazard mitigation grant from FEMA, which is allowing us to put together a stormwater master plan. And the purpose of this stormwater master plan is to, number one, identify the problem areas, number two, determine how you can fix those areas, and then number three, come up with a plan and a cost for prioritizing and implementing those, those ideas and those, those new infrastructure components over the next, you know, however many years. So the process that we're going to go through, we've already started some of this, the first step is for us to do a physical assessment of the hotspot areas within the city, take a look at the size of the stormwater pipes, the number of inlets that we have, the outfall ditches, and make sure that we understand how that's all working. And also, part of that will be, we're going to hold some public meetings to be able to invite the public in and get an idea of where they see issues, you know, obviously, we can't be everywhere at, at the same time and see where the, the flooding is occurring, so we want to have that input from the actual residents and the business owners in the area. We'll take all of that information, and then we'll put together a hydrology and a hydraulic water shed model. And so we'll start using the science to determine what's supposed to be happening as, as we currently sit every time it rains, and we can use that model and do it in a whole bunch of different rainfall events from small to large, and see what's actually happening. Once we do that, we'll know exactly what areas need improvement, where the bottlenecks are, if you will, where we might not have enough inlets to get water out of the streets, we'll take and run some scenarios through our model, then we'll then identify what needs to be upgraded, and how we can best do that. Then kind of the final phase of the process will be to take all of that information and come up with an actual plan, something that has costs associated with it, something that has maybe prioritization, so that you know which project needs to happen first, second, or third, and then kind of an implementation plan. Obviously, you can install all the storm drainage that you want in the first, you know, six months, but over the course of time, you can go through and figure out, you know, what's the best plan of action moving forward to solve some of these stormwater issues and repetitive losses that we keep suffering. So that's kind of where we're heading, be happy to answer any questions.
You haven't looked at any of the structure yet, the pipes?
We, we have started, we actually have some folks that have been out in the field the last couple of days, starting to look at some of these, these issues, so you may see them around, wearing some vests, looking in the streets, that, that's what we're doing.
We've got one particular area that we're aware of, and the, the pipe, I think, runs under the street, is that, is that correct?
We can't remember.
The one that, is it Hampton?
Yeah, you know, he's talking about the one where we're looking down First Avenue South, where it turns down to Hampton, goes from one size to another, back to another size?
Right.
Large, small to large?
Right, yeah, and that, that's exactly the kind of stuff we're looking at right now.
To work with DOT to put that resurfaced after you've gone in and replaced the pipe?
Well, eventually, yes. So right now, what we're doing is coming up with a, more or less a conceptual idea of what needs to happen. So once we've identified specific projects that need to happen, we would go into a full design mode and design what size pipe needs to be in there, exactly how a contractor should put it back, in some cases, working with the DOT to, you know, a lot of this infrastructure is, is theirs, so we'll have to kind of work with them and see how they're going to help us with that.
We're looking, we've got someone else looking at renovating downtown and redoing our downtown, it doesn't make much sense to not coordinate these two projects so that we, I think downtown might ought to be a priority to, to get that flood situation fixed before we go down there and spend a lot of money and people invest in buildings and stuff. And certainly that would alleviate some of the problem on First Avenue, the floods is just.
And hopefully.
Just the thought of prioritization.
And this, this probably is going to tell us why, other than we think of it, one large size to a small size is an issue, but, you know, they tell us something else in this city, maybe not enough inlets, maybe too many inlets coming in, we just got to wait and see what happens.
Kevin, you were here for the last grant?
I wasn't here, but I saw the pictures, and they were, they were something else.
And this, this probably hopefully is going to tell us why, other than we think of it, one large size to a small size is an issue, but, you know, may tell us something else in this area. Maybe not enough inlets, maybe too many inlets coming in. We just got to wait and see what happens.
Kevin, you were here for a blast, right?
I wasn't here, but I saw the pictures, and, uh, they were, uh, they were something else.
See, I got a call and a picture, uh, you know, myself from, from somebody in front of my. And he said, he said, "That's why I don't put carpet back down." But, but it, you know, if you're going to get that kind of rain, you're probably not going to be able to design something that's going to take care of that.
Well, that, that, that's correct, and, and that'll be kind of the, the one caveat here is, you know, you can design for the hundred-year storm or the thousand-year storm or whatever. The, the fact of the matter is, it, it doesn't happen all that often, hopefully, and number two, you can't afford it.
Yeah.
You know, so it, it's way beyond the normal design standards that you would use. Uh, what we want to do is make sure that what's happening now and what we come up with a fix for handles your everyday type, you know, storm events.
So basically, y'all still more around identifying the problem areas?
Right, so I didn't touch on the schedule, but as far as schedule is concerned, it's going to take us about two months to kind of get the hotspot areas and know exactly what's going on. It'll take us several months after that to put together the water model and then also start doing some of these, you know, conceptual design elements to see how it would be improved. And then we'll take another couple of months to put together the master plan and prioritize, you know, what these are. So we're looking at finishing sometime next summer.
How do you determine which problem areas works the most? Like, First Avenue has a lot of flood. Highway three oh one has a lot of flood, but it has a lot of track.
A lot of the, when you start talking about prioritization, it's a lot of subjectivity to it. So there's various criteria that you can use to figure that out. So if it impacts, you know, building structures, that, that's an issue. If it impacts, you know, travel, uh, the vehicles being in, we get back and forth, that's an issue. How we come up with exactly which one should be done first, second, and third will depend partly on those types of issues, as well as cost, um, as well as how many people are impacted by it. So, you know, if you have, if you have one area that floods all the time and it's one house, and it's going to cost a lot to fix it, that may not be as valuable to you or as high a priority as fixing a major trunk line, which then benefits, you know, a whole section of the city.
Thank you very much, Kevin. All right, one thing I'd like to say, um, my son called me in a panic and had a couple of free guys come over there, and he was flushing on one floor, and he was coming out of his bathtub on the bottom floor. Anyway, Nicholas, um, was just overwhelmed by how quick they came, how nice they were, and how efficient they were to fix the problem. Just, you know, say something to him, um, I think Nicholas is, but, but, you know. We, we really have a lot of good people that work for our, our city, a lot of good people. But I, I didn't ask that on. This PD Coalition.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm a volunteer at, my name is Asha Cola. I'm a volunteer at PD Coalition. On behalf of PD Coalition, I would like to thank this council for giving us time to express our appreciation for your acknowledgement of the necessity of our services. I would also like to announce that we have moved into our dominant location at eleven oh one Highway, three oh one North, here in Dillon. Since we have been there, we have provided the services for twenty-two victims of domestic violence. From October twenty nineteen to September twenty twenty, the Dillon Satellite Center provided assistance to one hundred and four family violence victims. The Dillon Satellite Center requested fifty-seven protection orders, of which twenty-two have been rendered. October is National Domestic Violence Month. Our goal is to raise awareness about domestic violence and the effects it has on family and communities. Currently, South Carolina still ranks in the top ten in the United States with domestic murders at number six. At PD Coalition, we believe that the reduction of family violence, sexual violence, sexual assault, and child abuse should be the goal of everyone, the community as well as service providers. Working together, we can make this happen. Once again, we appreciate you as community leaders, your support of the Coalition. Coalition's work to combat domestic violence is very appreciated. Thank you for your commitment to helping create a safer, safer, more compassionate community in the city of Dillon.
You know, the, uh, they raised money, and their first process of raising money, about that building. And I think they're, they're, what's your total project is about a hundred and ninety thousand?
Um, a little over two hundred thousand, of which we've already raised a hundred and nine thousand of that.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, community, now there's a match, that's, is that including the matching?
Yes.
That's including the matching, which is, uh, fifty percent up to seventy-five thousand? So, you know, we, you know, the community is, you know, they're going to raise a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And, um, so you've got roughly fifty of that then? But they don't match it, to you match it.
Right.
So you raised fifty, so we need to raise another seventy-five thousand dollars to complete that. But they've got some, some people that they're approaching that, that will come through with it. But, um, PD Coalition.
So that's in the building that used to be, uh?
Tim and Scott. Done a good job. All right, uh, citizens report? Anything going? You're the only one here. And we're glad you're here. The, uh, all right, well, listen, let's go to old business then. Ordinance number twenty dash one four, resigning of all, of the ground and all property from a D two highway commercial district to, uh, R seven medium-density residential district, second reading. All those in favor? Or can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, new business, this is, uh, ordinance number twenty dash one five maintenance residential garbage containers, um. Glenn, can you give us a little background on that?
Yeah. We have, and Bert probably gave you a little more than that. We have several occasions a week where people are reporting on their road carts from this. And it's more so that, what do you, getting road carts from this is a headache. We, we're not able to get any of them. We budge some, we order some, we got some that still in back order. But it seems like every day someone's missing a road cart. Or they defaced the road cart. They've done something to it themselves. And it's got to the point where we're just eating that cost when the user should be more responsible and, and take care of their road cart. So this, this ordinance, um, would provide steps for, for us to take in case someone misplaces their road cart, or they defaced their road cart, they tear up their road cart, damage their road cart, make them more accountable. And, and that cost could be roughly eighty-five dollars to replace that car if it's not used. It costs us.
Do they, are there recurrent offenders?
Sometimes it is, it, yeah, the problem is that a lot of residents, they, you know, put their can out by the road, and they, they leave it by the road.
Yeah.
And it stays out there for a period of time, and people come by or stay with them or whatever. And we feel as, as expensive as they are, you know, people are held more responsible for their can. They would go out and get it, bring it back to their house, and, and take care of their can. And like Glenn said, we're, you know, we're at a shortage of road carts. You can't really get anything. And, you know, they're very expensive. We just ordered a hundred road carts, and eight thousand dollars for a hundred road cart. So, and like, like Glenn said, we'll continue to eat this cost. And if we can make citizens more aware, they don't have to be more responsible of their can to help us out with this.
I, you know, and they, and I don't know how you get that message down, but, um.
Well, when they, when they, you know, come for the water bill or, or get new service, whatever, we need to have something in place that we can give it to them. It's, it, we already have an ordinance, but it really is kind of vague, so we just kind of spruced it up that, you know, that we're looking for.
This is already an ordinance, we're just?
Yeah, we have bits of teeth.
So you're doing it in a way, if they personally affect it or lose the can or not, keeping it up? And the reason I'm saying that is, I mean, I've seen a lot of wheels.
If, if it's something we've done for our new things of that nature, we get, we get, we repair them, and that's not easy. Cans damaged, or a lot of our cans are very old. They're twenty years old.
That's something I need to bring up.
True.
I think that's something we need to look at. They're either putting the cans down too hard.
But what you got, the cans are very old.
Oh, I got it.
Let's, let's get through this, and then I can answer that question as well.
Well, I have a question. My question is, I, I've had many callers with the lid staying up on the trash can that we're trying to find. Have we tried to get the opposite way, and then y'all send out a wire?
Well, y'all could do it in that certain way, because they'd have asked the trash to be it off. But what, what you've asked him to try to put them down with the lid on it, but what he does, he does it like that, so it's a bigger thing. We just need to be before it's dealt.
What the problem is, when you have big rains going, it rains all over your can. And I don't have the answer for what they called with.
Let's say that's.
So I don't know how we can get it.
It's kind of like.
Oh, yeah, especially the most people who can't pull it back to the house.
They, they go around it.
Yes, sir.
I tell you, with my can, I notice something's better if you don't lock it down. Leave the flap up and don't lock it.
And that's what I'm going to get you.
And it's easier, come on, watch them do it.
Yeah.
And it goes right up, get a top, falls right back down.
If you've got what we call the older cans, that's got a lid that locks down. That's where we have issues with our new truck with those cans. As far as wheels, um, the door cans that we get, they, they just let it down, and we have no issues with those, as far as, that's where we get it going. But we're working on it. We try to, you know, we've talked about the patent, we've talked about it in the council meeting. It looks like with rainy weather, let's make sure the tops are on the, have them filled down.
But when the fella came that time over on, plus the surface wall, did we go back and alleviate his problem? He had issues with the trash can, too. I forgot his name. He can't be qualified.
I don't remember.
The Indian fellow, I remember his name.
I don't remember what his was, I don't remember. But this ordinance would help us have a little more feet in being able to have this can replaced if we determine, and it's still out of determination, if they did damage it or whatever.
All right, got a motion? How we go, how you going to prove that they did?
Well, I mean, again, it, it's, it's going to be tough. It, it is. But we got to have something to go with it. Um, you know.
Because you see people on my street, you see them all the time with a trash can on their side.
Oh, I have to, yeah, it's like a ladder, that's all.
That should be, that should be one of the things, if the police, you know, pull up the trash can with recycling and stuff, and you know it ain't yours, because if it is yours, you have it at your house with your trash can. So that should be, that should be a red flag. They should be.
And here's, and here's the issue we have. Here's the issue we have, though, is if people, after their trash is dumped, take their can and put it back in their yard, usually don't have that problem. When we find out that their can stolen was, while left it out by the street. Yeah, and, and that's easier for somebody to take. Now, each can has an ID number on it. We've gone out and found cans at other locations that may have belonged to you, that was at Douglas's house or by his first. You know, we, we find them, we can go out and look for them, but in some cases, we don't find them. I've seen them.
I see, I see them all the time, two or three of them down the street. I don't know if Bert sent somebody to pick them up or what, but they, after they, they dumped where they wanted to dump it, they might take an installment in, in the ditch.
You're buying them in the ditch, you're correct.
It hurt, I guess, yeah.
They knew how much they worked, they'd be trying to sell them. Sell them back to the sea.
We just, we just trying to get some teeth that we're working to make people. We're not trying to make people buy cans. We're just trying to get them to be more responsible. And to take it, be more accountable, that'll help us, is all we're at.
And we don't have an ordinance now.
Yeah, we do have some things in place, but we don't have costs of replacement, or, you know.
So what do you say if John Doe comes and says, "Somebody stole his trash can." Uh, six months later, you got the same John Doe, you start putting the cost on it?
You may be, because what we do now is somebody comes and says, "They, somebody stole their trash can." You need to go to the police department, file a police report. We may have a lot of trash cans, so we're out spending money replacing that trash can. You know, there, there are some cases that they would just move them. I found one about two years ago at Christmas late, tossing her trash can was gone. So we went over in her neighborhood and looked, and sure enough, found her can. Once we got the ID, it was out in open field. Somebody had taken it to an open field. And she didn't know how it got there, and I know she didn't do it. She was like ninety years old, and somebody took it. We're just trying to have some teeth. Yaks is to make it near the, um, paparazzis.
I would know where to go.
Yeah. But that, that's what we're trying to accomplish.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Um, all right, accept bids to purchase laptops for the police video.
That's one I was discussing earlier. This, this bid was basically through Dale Computers, which is through state contract.
I'll make the eighth ballot.
All right, fifty-eighth ballot, and sixty-three dollars.
Got a motion, second? All those in favor? Opposed? Good, good.
How quick would that get started, then?
We'll order them, it'll be over tomorrow, and they go through there. So, depending on, once we get the computers, then get the crew in here, install them. I, I hate to tell you, this time next month, they'd be there, but very well.
I would say, poor person. All right, council members, can I start?
Okay, uh, want to know how the phone system and the water bill is going? You call in with your phone, pay your water bill?
So, online payment?
Online payment.
Online payments are going pretty good. Uh, as far as them calling them, the phone number themselves, they're, that's not.
That's not working?
Not as good as I thought it was, but going online and paying it, it's going nowhere.
So give me an understanding, to go online, does it automatically update that they make, they're paying to the bill? You say zero, zero, zero?
They'll send us a report, that they have, you know, that they have paid, and we'll get those names.
If, if you went online tonight and paid your water bill, more and more than you ever did, you pay more than you ever did.
Now, if you're into Lincoln status, can you still do it online?
We can block, we block those. Well, they can't go on and pay just one of the, we block them and, and say you have to go into the water department or call the water department.
You can't.
After penalty, you do it?
We do have the penalties, but what I'm saying is, if you get two months, you need to pay the two months. But when you go online, it will let you pay one month. And, and the previous one, it will make you pay the burnout. So we block those accounts.
So, so we, we did a courtesy during the code. Uh, have we, people have called up now in backlog, have they called up?
If you, you, uh, we probably numbers wise, we're probably where we were pre-code. Um, there was probably a handful of people, maybe five or six, that we worked out some installments for. But other than that, we're back on our own, um, turnovers are a bit high.
Drew, I want to tell you, you guys' lessons.
Yes, sir.
Um, Councilman David meets in the last month. I'm not trying to take you down. As far as the high-power rifle, um, bless this.
Running roughly fifty thousand dollar cost in curate.
Yes, sir.
And we went back to the police officer, they prefer not to share that, that fifty thousand would be for all police officers.
We can't get some kind of grant?
There's, there's a possibility, first year, the municipal association has grants for, um, vests. I think they pay like two grand. Does it two grand per vest?
No.
I can't remember.
It's a P P and that, uh, DOJ got a P P also.
So there's a possibility there's some funds out there for that.
When I see fifty, I mean, that they would pay, so fifty thousand, we got half.
Well, we, we pay.
We ended up paying twelve thousand for.
Goodness, for four vests?
No.
Oh, that's for every officer?
Yes.
How about just for the rotation?
They don't want, the officers don't want to share.
They don't want to do that.
What, what we looked at was, you asked about something that would prevent a rifle round, and those vests weigh about twenty some pounds. Officers are not aware, they're not aware of that every day, that is just, just not.
No, not every day, just in a certain situation.
Well, but if you put it in a patrol car, then, then at every shift, they have to switch them out to the patrol car. So what I did was we got another gun to give us plug for panels, well, actually just, it's panels that goes here and on the back, on top of your vest, and will, then will resist up to a three or eight grand, and those are, those plates are four hundred dollars a piece. But you'll have to have vests also, which is about that.
So that's, that's where that ends, but we'll, we'll get grants first year and see. But to go back, I heard you mention something, we could spend the money and then get reimbursed for most of it.
That's already considered.
We could, we could easily, yeah, we could easily have twelve thousand instead of forty-five thousand.
I don't think the DOJ lets you build them.
They won't.
I think that you get kind of one of those.
Now, are we gonna put that in the budget, how are we gonna? Yeah, let's, let's see what grants are out there and.
It's sad to say that we lost a police officer in Murdo, South Carolina. I don't know if we've done this or not, but I've asked over the months with the high powered rifles to be back into the car. Are they getting back to the cars, has that been done?
You answered that.
Yeah, we've got.
All the cars?
All cars have cars, but we've got vast majority of them. And the reason some of them did not, every car has to have a locker in. The ten thirty-three program, we got the rocket crew, there are some guidelines that say you gotta have certain things in place, all the cars don't have a locker, but ones that have the lockers, I would.
You know, fifty percent of them.
I'd say the scores.
I'd say the closest fifty percent of the cars have the rockets. Well, but the, the plan is to have all the rockets back in the car.
And no shotguns?
Yeah, some of them have shotguns also.
Well, can we try to make sure that the, the patrol cars that do the shift work, can we try to see if they can't get installed with a rocket?
For that's.
Yeah, that's the one that we're working on. Um, because the guy, the police officer in Murdo, he's got killed with a high powered rifle.
That was the message, anybody went through it. You know what I'm saying, that you, those are probably working with this.
So, you know, I just wanted to mention that, appreciate you for that, and that's all I got.
Okay, um, maybe just to, um, reiterate something about, as far as a special enforcement group, or maybe drugs slash what, is there any way we could organize a group just for that? And do we have that? In, in retro fit, just a few guys, or special situations?
Dave and I had talked about this, once the new sheriff comes on in January, hopefully there will be a task force, the sheriff department, city police, plating around the ladder, police and down.
Now, do you need it separated by drug and others, or all together?
The, this SWAT thing per se, or, or special entry thing, is gonna be difficult for us to do that by ourselves.
How about the drug, like we used to, separate group?
Well, we, we have a separate group.
How many officers you have in that group?
Right now, we only have, we have, I have moved one over to that group, and then he, he pulls three, we have three other officers that he pulls and uses in, or pays them.
I mean, I see we lost another resident who was drug overdose, things like every day. We're talking about it, you know, I hate it, you know, it's like we, we could put it in with arms, that the drug people have in this community. Guilty, guilty or dying, it's not the police's fault, but it's just, I don't know. Maybe one day we can organize another, find a, say, um, another thing I have here, I mentioned Glenn, the residential storage district, you were gonna do some research on that.
Yeah, and, and that will have to be something that y'all vote on along with, um, for Mark Petrie, but the state archives has to be involved also, because they have determined that it's distorted, so we've got to get them involved and see what we can.
Mark Blue, the King Boulevard, I guess that project is almost finished?
That project is completed as far as construction.
Looks nice. A lot of people have called me saying.
Except for maybe ten, fifteen back porch town, they got to put in a piece of sidewalk there, area rounds, do that old convenience, now a six foot store, they have a little section there to do. The only thing other than that left is there are six open hitch street lights, that's going with wooden poles, those are being changed out, kind of match what we had in Main Street, the taller poles, and off the day, the shorter poles. So that should be done here in the days, two or three weeks, we'll do the energy. Then after that, they just, they have a year to make sure the grass grows, that the, there's not a lot of erosion around the sidewalk. We all just bring their titties to see that erosion, they planted grass, and that's tuning up, so we still got a year away before that is completed. And also, um, I, this thing will do a fantastic job in correct order about that, the Dylan girl, um, mistake, did you not? So thank you.
Thank you for that, too. And another thing on Janet, I was just looking at, like, the general fund, fund ten, I was just going through it right fast, and, and again, I noticed like office supplies and other stuff, we're already fully extinguished our budget in three months. Now, explaining to me why we had to increase our budget in these areas, and we're at ninety-three percent in three months, where were we being at then?
Free what?
Department.
It's only ten, one ten. City.
Well, it's a city camp.
So you're not just spending much more than that?
On the next page, finance, computer software, was that an upgrade at eighty-seven percent? Y'all upgraded?
We did that angle, the same.
Um, I was also looking at Department eighteen, code enforcement, publications, legal ads, a hundred and nine percent of seventy-five hundred, explaining that?
Well, it's just more things that when, if you have to advertise a certain thing, going to newspaper, condemn property, things of that nature, you just budget what you've done in the past, training sometimes it'd be worse, sometimes it'd be less.
I don't know, I just saw a trend between Gary and Harper, both appear all the time about the supplies being out of, we're three months in.
And it's some of those maybe just a one time thing during the year, where it's, it can be on both, depending on what comes up, it is, though.
Now, when we got to fire, we have a capitality there, and I guess we call it an asset, but we're a hundred and thirteen percent, so we're thirteen percent above of thirty-six thousand and four.
That was the vehicle plus a equipment that was made through it.
Home, um, garbage fleet maintenance, Department twenty-seven, the year of the bottom, eighteen hundred and twenty-nine percent of our budget?
What that is is forward, will you?
Yeah, just put it in there. When you get to, um, like, Department forty-six and, um, water sewer, where we're, where we're going in hand tools, where we're going at three hundred and ninety-five percent above the five hundred, I mean, generally, is that a rule when we're getting out of budget lines?
Where you at, forty-six hundred?
Forty-six, Department forty-six.
Forty-six, you're talking about that, um?
That's folks, hand tools, so, where we're way out of budget. Were we putting the five hundred?
Yeah. I can look at that and call you, let you know exactly what it was.
Doc, that's all I got.
All right, well, about the building, the junket, the building, the building that we're talking about, maybe taking that?
Well, Jack and I, I meant to bring that up, had the guy bid yet? We got a bunch of questions, I told you about that, around there, but we're trying to get in contact with the state attorney, they're supposed to be working on their estate, am I correct? She hadn't called you back yet?
I called her twice, she had nothing to do with it.
So we waited to get her back to see what they're gonna do?
And, and that's the reason I feel like I could call her, because the family member that Glenn talked to, and somewhere called, Richard, Jean, Richard, said he gave you some information, what did you talk to?
And what we're trying to do is. They can't, they can't spend any money, they can't do anything, because they don't own the building, since it's in the state, so they were trying to finally get the estate moving and complete.
And I would tell you, that's probably gonna be a job to call down state. I mean, it's been forty years, that's just sort of it.
Thank you.
We, uh, you, you got anything on the bus building, I think you said you had?
We're gonna talk about that in the second session.
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
The bus system, do, we, we have four, I have to get the buses running around here, picking the people up, drops are, if we say. We have a hand in.
That's true.
Well, I was gonna say, that was good, I really see people using.
We get a loan to.
We give anybody a few bucks.
I thought we said we went to ten dollars or whatever.
Y'all never, y'all never did in the budget process, uh, but, I mean, you know, and at that point in time, we also said we were gonna wait and see how it's going, and it looks like it's going ever so good.
You get a lot of people commenting on it?
Yeah, a lot of people.
I've seen it.
A lot of people writing, you see them getting off different places, because, so I think it's going pretty good. Um, what happened with our J.B. Martin project?
That is still ongoing, in fact, already spoke with engineers today, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Um, as far as they're, they're working on engineering of it, of water and sewer, what they need and, uh...
That's what, uh, what, what the lady came with a vision about doing like a housing?
That's right, that is correct. It kind of was put on hold back in, in the spring, the federal government, the state government, where they were getting funds, kind of put everything on hold, but I think they're rocking and rolling now.
Do we ever have to put up, what, two fifty, three hundred thousand?
They haven't asked for anything yet. And all we did was write a letter of support.
Yeah.
Didn't say, we did not admit.
All right, good. I felt a little bit like I was.
Yeah, we get to commit that type of thing, we just wrote a letter.
All right, do the, they, they actually do, do, they do walk, do they, do the officers get out now and check the doors down Main Street? I remember back in state, when we just look, you can see those guys walking, checking the doors, the drive, um, the alleys and stuff, we see that, you know, we don't see none of that stuff.
Yeah, they're, every, every officer's responsible for a certain zone, and that's what they have to do, not is check doors.
So is that what we're going through, is a zone, here in that?
We're not, we're not in a zone, but they're responsible for the zone, for it, as far as checking doors.
I want to thank Burke, Burton, I made a phone call to him one day, asking about some stuff that was going on, he immediately got it straight from Burke, thanks, man. I mean, less than fifteen, twenty minutes, I got home, he was gone, so, um, and, um, Danny, he did a great job, and I want to pass off the key with the city fire department the other night, they helping the fire department, uh, complex building, and guy, really came in and, you know, uh, really helped out with the ladder, they keep him, went up there and went you up there on the, on the ladder? Yeah.
So that was ours?
Yeah, I was going there every day, but I could have him up there. Glad you did call.
He let you, bruh.
I am, but Keaton's up there, he ain't gonna have to, he's all right. That's a great thing. Did you tell him for you to watch for that fire?
I, I'm assuming that.
We're, we're still in agreement with them, that structure within so many miles of the city, especially, um, industrial and apartment complexes, if they get, get something, they told us with them initially.
We're small enough to do that.
And help each other out, which is fair.
Okay, um, next is, uh, executive session, can I get a motion going to executive session to discuss legal matter? All those in favor?